I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Moreset.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Cormick.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Hoggett, absent.
Hall.
Here.
Okay, first, before we move into citizen comments, we have with us tonight our brand-new community development person. I think we do. Oh, there he is, Mike. Mike, come on up. This is Mike Johnson. So...
Good evening.
Do you have prepared remarks, sir?
No.
I wanted to introduce you to the council if you hadn't had a chance to meet everybody yet, as well as this opportunity to introduce you to Hudson as a whole. So, we're very, very appreciative to have you onboard. It's great to have you here, and I know that you're going to hit the ground running.
Absolutely. I'm happy to be back.
Yeah.
Anything you want to say? I grew up right here. Just the...I grew up here in Hudson. I'm from here. Graduated from Hudson High School in '03. Went to Iowa State after that. Graduated with a degree in community and regional planning. Worked in the Des Moines market for about five and a half years. From there, went to my current...or my just past position. I finished up there two days ago, or I guess last Friday or Thursday. It's been a whirlwind, but ran an economic development office in Green County, Wisconsin. My family's still in New Galeras. We're looking for houses here in Hudson, and I'm just excited to give back to this community that gave me so much. So, thank you.
And how long are you going to be working with Denny? Have you talked him into hanging on a little longer?
He's not retiring. We're both here for a while.
Good. Well, take advantage of that while you can. All right, there's one other thing that I wanted to do before we move into citizen comments, and that is a proclamation for Denny Darnold. City of Hudson, Wisconsin proclamation honoring Denny Darnold. Denny, you want to step up here a second, please?
Thanks. Sorry about that.
I'm going to read this, okay? Whereas, Denny Darnold has served as community development director for the city of Hudson since June 1, 1986, and is retiring on May 12, 2017, after tirelessly dedicating himself to serving the citizens of Hudson for 31 years. And, whereas, Denny Darnold has been involved with hundreds of development projects...hundreds of development projects, and has guided city officials, city staff, and the community through years of extensive growth in residential, commercial, industrial, and public facility development that impacts every resident of Hudson, past, present, and future. And whereas, Denny Darnold's skills in community development and city planning have been instrumental in providing Hudson-area residents with the highest quality of life, beautiful residential neighborhoods, successful retail and commercial facilities both in Hudson's historic downtown and throughout the city, and employers who provide employment to thousands of people. And whereas, Denny Darnold's calmness, integrity, positive outlook, subtle sense of humor, planning skills, and instincts have earned him the respect of developers, elected officials, city staff, his peers throughout Wisconsin and Minnesota, and in the Hudson community. And whereas, Denny Darnold has shepherded the St. Croix Business Park from its infancy to its current status as one of the most successful and sought-after commercial and industrial complexes in the Twin Cities metro, bringing jobs and a strong tax base to the city and the area. Whereas, Denny Darnold and his wife Jean have claimed Hudson as their home and have involved themselves in numerous community activities and volunteer work while raising three very successful children in the city. Now therefore, I, Rich O'Connor, hereby declare the week of May 7 through May 13 as Denny Darnold Week in the city of Hudson, and call upon all citizens of Hudson and the surrounding communities to extend their best wishes to Denny Darnold upon his retirement, and to recognize and acknowledge the long-term and far-ranging impact that Denny Darnold has had in making the city of Hudson, Wisconsin, a place that we are all proud to call our home. Denny?
Thank you very much. It's been an honor to represent the Hudson community, and I'm kind of a soft-spoken guy and not with a lot of words, but all I really want to say is thank you for making my family and myself so welcome to the Hudson community, and appreciate all the cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Denny. Thanks for everything you've done. You know, just to add to that a little bit, there isn't a thing in this city that Denny hasn't touched. I don't know if it's an appropriate metaphor or not, but everybody sees SimCity. You remember SimCity, one of the first online little playgrounds that you can go out and have a good time with? This is Denny's SimCity. This truly is. This is...Denny's had his fingerprints on virtually everything that has happened in this city, and is going to be sorely, sorely missed, certainly by me, but I know by everybody here that works here, as well as the residents of the city. But he's not going anywhere. He's looking, from what I understand, to have a couple seats probably on the third baseline of the baseball park when that's completed. So, that's where you'll find Denny with his grandkids. Thank you, Denny. All right, citizen comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jim Thomas. Reside on Lake Malaloo, Vice President of the Lake Association, and I stand here with absolutely nothing to ask for tonight. And I don't want to take any of the light away from Denny. What an incredible history. But seriously, I'm just standing here tonight just as a thanks to, again, as a resident of this town, to say what community involvement means. I spoke in front of the Joint Committee on Finance in Ellsworth, and Senator Harsdorff, Representative Zimmerman were very appreciative of the momentum that this community support has created with the replacement, hopeful passing of the budget for the Little Falls Dam. And we are crossing our fingers that it goes through. I would like to reach out to the community. If anybody is not aware of the magnitude of this vote coming up, they could go on our lakemalaloo.com website, and there is an opportunity to reach out to your elected officials if you are in support of this and give them your opinion. There's a form letter in that. And we are very hopeful that the revenue that this park has provided in nearly $30 million annually in expenditures by the over 800,000 people that use it, the Willa River State Park, continues to flourish. It means a lot to all of us, and I just seriously want to say thank you. The other thing I was talking about was with the buoy on Lake Malaloo to indicate the shalliness of some of the areas of water. I've talked to Tom. We'll get together, and we'll address that at an upcoming meeting. So, I just want to seriously say thank you to this...everybody here and this community. It's been an honor to work, you know, in support of something that I feel means a lot to everybody, so I do thank you all.
That's good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Anybody? Citizen comments? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Closed citizen comment portion of the agenda. Move on. Discussion of possible action on consent agenda items.
To approve the regular session meeting minutes of April 10, 2017, and organizational meeting of April 18, 2017. To approve claims in the amount of $405,069.11. To approve contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city in successful completion of the background check. The issuance of 14 regular operator licenses for the period of May 2, 2017 to June 30, 2018 to Sergio Zambrana, Matthew Hansen, Nathan Sauer, Hallie Ammond, Sidney Bendorf, Garrett Farber, Julie Amundson, Terry Barat, Jesus Rodriguez, Tracy Hagberg, Mercedes Spahn, Casey Beck, Lexia Wookiee, and Colleen Stevens. To approve the easement agreement to construct a fence within a drainage and utility easement area for Robert and Elizabeth Larson at 50 Lotony Bay. To place and file the building inspector's quarterly report. To renew a two-year contract with Al Croix Inspection for inspection services to be used in the absence of the building inspector. To approve the Yellowstone Trail Car Show on June 10, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Bath House parking lot. To approve closing Second Street between Myrtle Street and Cooley Road for the Homecoming Parade on September 20, 2017, beginning at 4:00 p.m. To approve Back Country Brew Fest event on July 29, 2017, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Lakefront Park. To approve closing Locust Street between Second and Third Street on the third Sunday of each month, May through September, for the Locust Street Car Show. To place and file the minutes of the March 29, 2017 EMS Commission. And to approve River Fest as a community event on July 18 through the 23rd, 2017.
Move for approval.
Second. Got a motion of second. Roll call.
Moreset.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Cormick.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on election of a council president. Following nominations from the council members, per ordinance, two-thirds of the votes of all council members are required for election. Again, we need four votes. Nominations are open.
I'll nominate Jim Weber again.
I'll nominate Bill Alms.
Got Jim Weber and Bill Alms. Any further nominations? Any further nominations?
Nominate John Hoggett.
Okay. Anybody not want to run?
I don't.
Okay, so, any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Hearing no more nominations. Nominations are closed. Think we need to prepare some ballots. Are they...
Do you have...do you have a piece of paper?
for John Hoggett, I'm sorry, and one for Alms.
Mm-hmm.
That's right in front of you.
So, two Weber, two Hoggett, one Alms.
Everybody should have one. Looks like this.
All right, so I don't think we're going to get this resolved unless everybody's
You guys want to go ahead and write down who you want?
here. So, we'll just postpone this one more time?
Yep.
And get that on the next agenda, please. Okay, new business. Discussion of possible action on preliminary master plan conditional use permit for St. Croix Meadows redevelopment, 2200 Carmichael Road, Hudson Gateway LLC.
Evening.
Evening.
Plan Commission recommends approval of the preliminary master plan conditional use permit for the redevelopment of the St. Croix Meadows site at 2200 Carmichael Road with the following conditions. Updating narrative of the proposed redevelopment project to reflect recent changes in land uses and phasing that was presented in council packets. Approval of the preliminary master plan dated April 6, so the graphic that you saw in regards to the site plan in the council packets is the April 6 site plan. Staff approval of the revised traffic impact study dated April 6, and we did receive a revised copy of that on April 21, 2017. Maximum allocation of estimated flows to wastewater treatment plant of 1,048,000 inner gallons per day. We've been setting aside that amount for a number of years for this potential redevelopment. We didn't want to have other developments in Hudson taking away from that sewer capacity, so that's the reason it's been allocated for a number of years. Incorporated general engineer review comments from SEH Review Memorandum of March 17, 2017, also included in that was WSB, the consultancy engineers reply. Basically, you know, engineering review at this elevation of planning, you know, we're already just in the preliminary phases, but we want to get issues identified, so that's the reason. Maximum building height, 60 feet, and conditional use permits will be required for brewery and stadium lighting. In the first phase, that is the recommendation, first phase will be the site preparation, interior street, access to roads, Carmichael Road, stormwater utilities, relocation, city sanitary sewer, and water trunk mains, baseball field and stadium, stadium building and brewery, mini golf, 18 holes, a hotel, 150 rooms, and conference center. Restaurant, 5,000 square feet, office approximately 25,000 square feet, and corporate office of approximately 150,000 square feet. The traffic analysis indicated that full bailed-out of this development over a three- or four- or five-year period of time is going to stress Carmichael Road, and that's the greatest issue for the city. Now, it's not this development in itself that provides that stress. That stress has been...and traffic has been building on Carmichael Road for a number of years, and we will be going into a Carmichael Road corridor study here quickly. The...once that study's done, there'll be a number of different things that will need to be done at Carmichael Road to help alleviate this stress from any development, including the dog track. One of those measures is to really try to get the Exit 2 reconstruction project moved up as quickly as possible, and that's something that the city of Hudson's going to have to work with the governor's office and Wisconsin DLT office to try to get that plan and proposal expedited. There's other things on Carmichael Road that need to be done also. Signalization is a key issue. We need to get the north-south traffic moving in sequence and lighting as best possible. There are some additional lanes, turn lanes on Hannah Road going west and south on Carmichael, then northbound at Stage Line, a right turn lane needs to be added also. These things have been considered previously before this traffic review is done. It's just that this analysis, again, points those considerations out. So, we are...the Plan Commission is recommending approval of this preliminary master plan to move the project ahead, but we really, you know, we really need to move Carmichael Road project and any improvements ahead as quickly as possible. There's some discussion on what the cost of signalization might be. That's something that could be implemented in the next couple of years as far as getting that coordinated. We might be looking anywhere from 75,000 to 100,000 per intersection, so you're looking at a $400,000 to $500,000 investment by the city of Hudson to do that. Again, I want to emphasize, it's just not this development. It's pushing at pressure on Carmichael Road, but again, if we want to encourage the redevelopment of this site, you know, these are things we need to give consideration to. With that said, Mr. Rob Keen, representing the St. Croix Meadows Redevelopments here tonight, the Golar, the redevelopment proposal, Mr. Clint Claus, the developer's here tonight, Mr. Chuck Rickard is also here. He is the author of the traffic analysis. And also here tonight representing the city is Mr. Glenn Van Warmer, from our traffic engineer. So, any of those, if you want to hear from any of those individuals, be willing to relinquish the floor.
Anybody?
Well, for conversation, I'll move that we approve the preliminary master plan based on staff and committee recommendations for this development.
Staff and Plan Commission recommendations.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion of second. All right, discussion. Anybody need to hear from anybody else? We've got a number of people here to answer questions.
I have a lot of concerns about the traffic plans, and I know we do need to get the complete study for the whole road, but I drove that route 37 years, two times a day minimum, and I don't believe this plan's going to fix the issues that it has already and that are going to get worse. A question, when we discussed this earlier, that there were going to be...the estimate was 2,500 employees on a daily basis using that, which would seriously...it would, to me, it would seriously say the estimates here are way under. They talk about 1,000, 1,200 not...peak traffic in the morning. Well, with 2,500 employees, it's not going to be 1,200, so something's not balancing out here for me. The...that road also is...with its current traffic is negative, and there's a...it necks down so strangely and goes back out. It's not safe. It's a...been known as a bicycle and pedestrian bottleneck hazard for years, and a lot of experienced bicyclists will not ride that route. They try to avoid that because getting through from the city to Cooley Road, Cooley Trail, is not safe, and you have to make a left-hand turn across two lanes of traffic, and you're...you've got traffic necking in behind you and then coming out around you. It's just the whole design is really not good, and I don't think this design that's depicted here is going to solve...is going to solve any of that, so let's not be limited to what's...
Excuse me a minute. You know, it's very difficult for me to think that two professional traffic engineers look at this, have consulted, discuss this, and are making recommendations upon which they think the system can work if certain things are done. And, I mean, the traffic analysis is done, Carmichael Road is done, and, you know, we're identifying there's going to be issues, and issues need to be identified quickly and addressed quickly, but, I mean, you might as well shut down any development at all in Hudson and wait 10 years until the new interchange goes in if you're going to want for the system to not get potentially worse than it is now. I mean, that's the option.
Well, I'm not...Exit 2 is another issue. I'm just talking about the Carmichael Road right around that area. I think we should be looking at the solution for 1,000...what's it, 1,022, and doing that now as opposed to putting in a couple right and left turn lanes. I think we need to be...we need to look a little bit beyond what we need to do for this year. Let's count...can't we do that?
Well, that's exactly what the plan is recommending. It's not recommending...I mean, you know, first of all, you've got a development that's going to take a couple of years right before the peak traffic starts generating, but what they're saying, over a period of time, these improvements need to be made, but we, you know, the critical issue for Carmichael Road to succeed is getting that new interchange. That's the most important part of it. The lighting sequence is the second most important part of it. We've got to...those two things, but there are interim things when you do between now and when the Wisconsin DLT interchange goes in, the signalization, the turn lanes, all that can be done within a year or two if we get on with the study for the Carmichael Road corridor as quickly as possible, and we're hoping in the next meeting we can bring that back and get that started, so it'll be completed by the end of year.
I absolutely agree. I'm the person who's originally made the motion that we do a study on Carmichael from north to south, that it has to be...the whole thing has to be looked at, so I'm totally in support of that. I'm just saying, let's...I'm a little bit confused about that study versus the recommendations here, or they need to be blended together.
We aren't suggesting they be blended together. It accomplishes the traffic, so we don't lose that level of service that...if we don't do the improvements, the level of service is going to go down to be a critical factor. We want these things, these...
Which improvements are you talking about?
Well, the improvements, you know, the signalizations. We need some interim improvements to be done before the Carmichael interchange can be reconstructed. We want to get those done as reasonably quickly as possible. The signalizations and the turn lanes, both at Stage Line, Hanley, and then at Riverside, if those are implemented, and then we get to signalization, that will help the traffic out, but the critical factor is the reconstruction. Reconstruction may...we may have to make determinations that there is no development along some areas. Annexations may either be put into a formal moratorium or just not looked at until a point that some of these...some of these changes in Carmichael Road are made.
We're not in...I'm not disagreeing with you at all on those. I think those are absolutely good ideas, and we need to move them all ahead. I'm concerned about the recommendations that this plan makes around Cooley Trail right at the area of development. I think it's inadequate.
Well, I...Chuck, or...
I think we should move ahead, and we should move ahead and do what it's going to look like in 1,022. It should be four lanes all the way through there. I'm not even sure a signal is the right idea, that we should look at a traffic circle there as opposed to a signal.
Well, you know, here again, I've had two professional traffic engineers make recommendations, and why are you going against those two professional recommendations? That I don't understand.
Thank you, Denny. I'm doing that because of my experience in driving that road every day.
Anybody else?
I guess my next question would be, okay, when we...once we approve this, what does that allow to happen? What are the next steps? What are we approving and having go ahead? Obviously, there is things that are not as defined as they eventually will be.
Well, what we're approving is a preliminary master plan, so the developer can go ahead and start working on details of the development, sanitary sewer, water, private streets, and things. Right here, we're at this elevation of planning. We need to get down to a much finer-toothed planning and engineering consideration. Right now, we're working on generalities. We need to get into details now.
Okay. So, is it additional planning, or does work start as well?
Well, you're talking about site work?
Yes.
Site work will be withheld until we...city staff can approve the details efficiently that we can allow them. One of the things we're working on is where the possibility of use of taxicentral finance. No site work will most likely be allowed at all until that plan would be approved, so it could be June or late June before site work could begin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Do you have any suggestions, Denny, about how we could move that Carmichael piece forward as a council? What we could do?
Well, we...there's two parties you need to get to, and that's Governor Walker and the Wisconsin DLT staff. Mayor O'Connor and I would love to get down here when Governor Walker's in the area, or go down and visit with the Secretary of the DLT and Governor Walker in Madison and do that as quickly. We've been wanting for some of these details of the redevelopment to come out, because we don't want to tell the governor half of the story. We want to tell him the whole story, and we don't have all the details at this point.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Anything? Anybody for the developer, engineer? Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thanks, Denny. Thanks, everybody. Discussion of possible action to purchase server and equipment. Brian?
Good evening again. The IT department is requesting authorization to move forward with the purchase of server equipment using the $95,000 that was budgeted and approved in the 2017 capital budget. Do you have any suggestions, Denny, about how we could move that Carmichael piece forward as a council? What we could do?
Well, we, there's two parties you need to get to, and that's Governor Walker and the Wisconsin DLT staff. Mayor O'Connor and I would love to get down here when Governor Walker's in the area or go down and visit with the Secretary of the DLT and Governor Walker in Madison and do that as quickly. We've been wanting for some of these details of the redevelopment to come out because we don't want to tell the governor half of the story. We want to tell him the whole story. And we don't have all the details at this point.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Anybody for the developer, engineer? Ready to vote? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's approved. Thanks, Denny. Thanks, everybody. Discussion of possible action to purchase server and equipment. Brian?
Good evening again. The IT department is requesting authorization to move forward with the purchase of server equipment using the $95,000 that was budgeted and approved in the 2017 capital budget. We reached out and got preliminary re-quotes and to get a feel for what the cost could be and found that CDWG, who we wish to purchase through, is $15,000 cheaper and is under our capital budget funds. And we feel we have met the procurement policy under the cooperative purchasing section. We'd like to piggyback the purchase onto the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance contract.
I'll move we approve the $95,000 request for the server upgrade and any ancillary equipment he needs for the extra $10,000.
Second?
Ninety-five total.
Got a motion, a second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion of possible action on letter of engagement with Bolton and Mank Inc. for engineering services and authorized preparation of plans of specifications, 2017 storm sewer repairs. Tom?
Good evening. The item before you tonight, again, would be the annual project for our storm sewer repairs. The specific item would be the letter of engagement for engineering services. And if you want to go forward, also authorized plans and specifications be prepared. We've selected, based on review of some of the city needs, four locations as listed in your issue sheet, the Lighthouse Pond, intersections of Fourth and Division, Ninth and Orange, and some structure and some pipe replacement on Cooley Road as well. It's proposed to fund this work out of our 2017 stormwater utility budget. And attached is the letter of engagement, which basically gives the scope, budget, and schedule. The original preparation of the plans would be the first phase, and that is a not-to-exceed hourly number. That number is 15,000. Construction phase is estimated at about $4,000, and that would be invoiced hourly at the actual number of hours. So the total estimated amount for the engineering services on this project would be $19,000. With that, the staff is recommending the letter of engagement with Bolton and Mank be approved and authorization for plans and specifications to be prepared as well.
You have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the engineering service and authorized preparation of plans specs 2017 storm sewer repairs.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thanks, Tom. Welcome back. Discussion, possible action on appointment of common council representative to the Public Utilities Commission. Alderperson Hoggett has asked to step down from his position as council representative on the Public Utilities Commission. The recommendation is that we appoint Alderperson Joyce Hall to fill that position.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion, a second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you for that, Joyce.
You're welcome.
I don't have anything for future agendas. Anybody?
I just want to make sure we have an issue sheet for the council and Mayor Pay for our next meeting, from the notes from the first meeting I brought it up with the recommendations.
I'll talk to Devon about that.
Thank you.
Kathy? Nothing? Motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.